Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Dandodh Pranam to all the devotees, thank you all for joining in for the special session on the auspicious occasion of Sri Radhaashtrini Adivas Mahamahud Sava today. So today is the previous day, like the day before Janmashtami also, the Adivas celebration happens where we prepare our consciousness for the most auspicious festival that is to come the next day. Right? So Sri Radhaashtrini is the most important, is the most auspicious, it is the most splendid, it is the most important festival for all the Gaudiya Vaishnavas. It is important to prepare our consciousness for Sri Sri Radhaashtrini. Alright, so let's begin by transferring one round of Hare Krishna Mahamitra with Sri Lopropad like always and then we will move on to singing some bhajans and also we will be discussing from His Holiness Bhakti Purushatam Swami Maharaj's book on Shrimati Rada Rani. He explains who is Rada Rani, what are her glories, so like that we'll try to read a little bit for the pleasure of Shrimati Rada Rani, for the pleasure of Shishi Guru and Goranga. So first we will start with the chanting of the Hare Krishna Mahamitra. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. So I'm just trying to share my screen, I will chant with Sri Lopropad. Hare Krishna, Namum Vishnabhadaya, Krishna Prishthaya, Bhutale, Shrimate, Bhaktive, Danta Swami, Nithinamine. Namaste Saraswate Devay, Gauravani Prichane, Nirviseshashunyavadi, Paschatyadeeshatari ne. Jai Sri Krishna Chaitanya Prabhu Nittananda, Sri Advaita Gada, Dharashri Vasadi, Gauravaktavinda. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare.
Life, right? Dharma heko adiko visheshu. What is the dharma? The dharma cannot be understood by animals. The dharma cannot be understood in any other form of life other than the human form of life. Right? Dehi nikyam avadyo yam dehi sarvasya bhara taha. Right? So that can, that consciousness of understanding that the soul is eternal and the body will always die. Right? This, this understanding can be obtained only at a, at a human level. And we can, we can transcend that, that basic understanding that I am not this body, I am the spirit soul. To extended understanding to how can a soul be actually happy? We can be happy only when we are engaged in the service of the Lord. Hmm. Why? Because you are parts and parcels of the Lord and just like when food is fed to the stomach, the entire body is energized, right? Hmm, uh, that words hmm, mulanishechanena, one second. Yeah, yata tarot mulanishechanena, right? It's, this word is talking about, um. How, uh, when we, when we actually water the root of the tree, all of the branches and all the tree parts also get nourished similarly. When we, uh, serve, satisfy and please the supreme personality of Godhead, then we are, all of us being part and parcel of the Lord. Are automatically getting benefited, automatically getting the, uh, the benefit of, um. Pleasing the supreme personality of Godhead. Yeah, so we'll just recite this verse. Yeah, this is Shrimad Bhagavatam. Four point thirty-one point fourteen. Yeah, so in this verse, um, of Shrimad Bhagavatam, it says. Yata taror mulanishechanena tripyanti tatskanda bujopa shakha. Pranopaha rachayate endriyana tatayeva sarvarhana machu teja. Ready? Yata taror mulanishechanena, simply by watering the root of the tree. Tripyanti, tripyanti means satisfied. Tat skanda bujopa shakha, skanda means trunk, buja means branches, upa shakha means twigs. Right? Similarly, pranopaha rachayate endriyana. By using our senses, the five senses plus the, uh, the sixth sense which is the mind. Tatayeva sarvarhana machu teja, huh, that means arhana means worship. When we worship Achuta, hmm, sarvarhana machu teja. That means when we worship the supreme personality of Godhead who is Achuta, who is, who is the infallible one. Who never fails in his affection for his devotees. When we serve Achuta, then automatically all of the souls. Uh, who are part and parcel of the super soul, they are all satisfied. So that is what is up. Uh, that is what is the, um, uh, verse from Shrimad Bhagavatam talks about. How pleasing the supreme personality of Godhead enables, um, us also to derive that satisfaction by serving the supreme lord. Otherwise, if you are engaged in sense gratification for a pleasure, then we will not be able to attain that happiness. Because it is a wrong way, it is not the prescribed method. So we will invariably be frustrated like that. Okay, Minakshima ji, go ahead. Living in the bodily conception.
Hare Krishna Mataji. Living in the bodily conception, our idea of happiness is like that of a man in delirium. Some philosophers claim that this delirious condition of body identification should be cured by abstaining from all action. Because these material activities have been a source of distress for us. They claim that we should actually stop these activities. Their culmination of perfection is in a kind of buddhist nirvana in which no activities are performed. Buddha maintained that due to a combination of material elements, this body has come into existence. And that somehow or the other, if these material elements are separated or disbanded, the cause of suffering is removed. If the tax collectors give us too much difficulty because we happen to possess a large house, one simple solution is to destroy the house. However, the Bhagavad Gita indicates that this material body is not all in all. Beyond this combination of material elements, there is spirit and the symptom of that spirit is consciousness.
Yeah, so that's what we discussed, that this body is not all in all, the soul exists, right? That is the first understanding of the Bhagavad Gita. Uh, yes, Shridhar Prabhu, you can go ahead.
Hare Krishna Mataji. A child can understand that it is the fact that consciousness is absolutely necessary for the.
Prabhu, uh, your, uh, your consciousness cannot be denied from there.
Conscious be cannot go, conscious be cannot be denied. Your body without consciousness is a dead body. As soon as consciousness is removed from the body, the mouth will not speak. The eye will not say, see, nor the ear, nor the ears hear. The, a child can understand that it is a fact that consciousness is absolutely necessary for the animation of the body. What is this consciousness? Just as heat or smoke are symptom of fire. So consciousness is the symptom of the soul. The energy of the soul or self is produced in the shape of consciousness. Indeed, consciousness proves that the soul is present. This is not only the philosophy of the Bhagavad Gita, but the conclusion of the Vedic literature. The impersonal, impersonal is followed the, of Sangra Charya as well as the Vaishnavas following the disciplining succession. From the Lord Sri Krishna. Where it is.
Knowledge.
One minute, where it is. Here it is, Lord Krishna acknowledged the, eh, factual existence of the soul. But the Buddhist philo, philosopher do not, they, the Buddhist contain that the certain stage of combination of matter produces consciousness. But this argument is refuted by the fact that although we may have all the conscient of matter at our disposal. We cannot produce consciousness from them. All the material elements may be present in a dead man. But we cannot revive that man is a man to consciousness. The body is not like a machine. When a part of machine breaks down, it cannot, it can be replaced and the machine will work again. But when the body breaks down and consciousness leaves the body, there is no possibility of replacing the broken part. And rejuvenating the consciousness. The soul is different from the body and as, as long as the soul is there, the body is animate. But there is no philosophy of making the body animate in the absence of soul.
Hare Krishna, thank you Prabhu.
Dandatpranam.
Hare Krishna, dandatpranam. Yeah, so we were discussing this, how, uh, right, when there is some, um, difficulty. Hmm, or when there is some, uh, you know, headache or, uh, you know, pain in the hand, pain in the leg, calf muscle pain etcetera. Then we just take a tablet, right? And we are functioning after that, right? But that same thing cannot be done when the soul leaves the body because that is the essential aspect of consciousness in the body. Hmm, we were discussing the other day, how when we, when a person is dead, we say he has left the body. Hmm, he has passed on, he has passed away. So who is the, who is the he who has passed away? Hmm, that is the soul, that is the symptom of consciousness that was present in the body because of the presence of the soul. So now the body by itself just made with the chemicals like earth, water, fire, et cetera, cannot perform any activity on its own. And it is not possible in any kind of laboratory, uh, to actually recreate life. That is not at all possible. So that's what it is. So with this, we will, um, we'll end our, uh, study of, uh. Uh, this book, we'll continue this tomorrow. Uh, so now, um. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. So now, uh, we will, uh, we'll try to read from this book. This is a very, uh, this is a two-part book, actually written by, uh, His Holiness Bhakti Purushottam Swami Maharaj. But before this, I just wanted to sing this beautiful song, uh, which is called, um. Uh, Radhika Ashtrikam, right? Uh, it's talking about, um. Mayamatma padapadma, dasya dasu radhika. Hmm, that means, uh, let me engage in the service of the lowest feat of Radhika. So this should be the mood as we hear about Shrimati Rada Rani. Because what is the ultimate goal of life? It is. Gopi bharthu padakamalayor dasa 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 dasanu dasa. Want to become the servant of the servant of the servant of Sri Rada and Krishna. We want to become the servant of the servant of the servant of Guru and Goranga. When you have this mood of servant of the servant of the servant, then you are not in anxiety because we are just following instructions. Even if something goes wrong, right? We are just, as long as we follow the instructions of our guru. Right? The success is not determined, uh, you know, that, uh, whether we are getting actually material success. That is not the determination of success. What is determination of actual success? What was the intention with which I am performing that activity? If my intention is to please Guru and Goranga, then the activity is successful even, uh, when the activity is being performed. Hmm, it does not depend upon the material results of that particular activity, right? So, uh, that, um, so we will sing this song. Namum Vishnubhadaya, Krishna preet, hi, bhutale. Shrimate, raktive, ganta, swami, nikinamine. Namaste, Saraswate, gauravani, pracharinne. Nervise, shashunyavadi, paschatya, de, shakari ne. Yeah, okay, let me share my screen. So this is, uh, Sri Radhika Ashtrikam. This is, uh, written by. Shla Krishnadas Kaviraj Goswami. Uh, this is from Shuka Sari Stava. Right? Shuka Sari Stava, right? Uh, it's, it's, it's from a part, it's from the same author. Who's written the Chaitanya Charitaamritta, right? Uh, Shla Krishnadas Kaviraj Goswami. So he has written this beautiful song. So we will sing this, uh, let me share my screen and then devotees can take turns to read the translations of this beautiful song. Um. Yeah, I hope the screen is visible. Okay. I'll just increase the font. So it comes easy for you to follow, yeah, okay. Pundumukma, takanchanavja, garva hari gaurava. Pita naman cheetavja ganda, irdhi nindhi soura. Pallaveesh, sunusarva, vansitata sadhika. Mayamatma padapadma, dasya dasu radhika. Mayamatma padapadma, dasya dasu radhika. Auradinda, kandhi nindhi chitra patashati. Krishna mata brinthakeli, pullapushva vaatika. Krishna nitya, sangamarth, padmapandu radhika. Mayamatma padapadma, dasya dasu radhika. Soukumarya, srishapalla, valikirthi nindra. Chandra chandanothale, sebya sheeta vigra. Vaavimarsha, ballaveesh, kamata pabadi. Mayamatma padapadma, dasya dasu radhika. Reshva vandhyav, yavathavi, vanditapiyarama. Rupanavya yavanadi, sambadana yatra. Lila harja, lelayaja, sayato sinadika. Mayamatma padapadma, dasya dasu radhika. Tasalasya, gita narma, sadkalali pandita. Premaramya, rupaveesh, sadgunali mandita. Reshvanavya, gopayoshits, ali kopiyadika. Mayamatma padapadma, dasya dasu radhika. Nitya, navya kerupakeli, krishna bhava sampadha. Krishna ragavandalyav, tesukampadha. Krishna rupaveeshakeli, lagna satsamadika. Mayamatma padapadma, dasya dasu radhika. Svetakampa, kanta, kashu, gadgadadi, sanchita. Marsha, harsha, pamadhi, bhagabushananchita. Krishna netra, toshi ratna, mandanali radhika. Mayamatma padapadma, dasya dasu radhika. Mayamatma padapadma, dasya dasu radhika. Yakshana, krishnavipa, yogasanta todita. Jatna lavda, krishnasangha, nirghata kiladika. Mayamatma padapadma, dasya dasu radhika. Ashtrakena, yastvanena, navdi krishnavalavha. Darshaneti, sailajadi, yosilali dolavha. Krishna sangha, nanditatma, dasya sidu bhajanam. Tamkaroti, nanditali, sankrayasu rajanam. Mayamatma padapadma, dasya dasu radhika. 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 Jai Jai Sri Radhe, Shyam. Yeah, Harini Mataji, you can read the translation Mataji of the first, uh, verse.
Hare Krishna Mataji, dandatpranam.
Hare Krishna, dandatpranam.
Her gold complexion steals the pride of golden lotus, tinged with red. Her fragrance mark the scent of lotus bloom with saffron powder spread. Her skill in satisfying Sri Hari is perfect and complete. May Radhika bestow on me the service of her lotus feet.
Hare Krishna, thank you. Okay, so next to Uma Maheshri Mataji, you can read the second verse, translation.
Hare Krishna Mataji, dandatpranam. Her wondrous silken garments shame the splendor rubies can display. She is a blooming garden where the bee of Krishna loves to play. She worships Surya every day so she and Madhava can meet. May Radhika bestow on me the service of her lotus feet. Hare Krishna, thank you.
Hare Krishna, thank you Mataji. Sindhu Mataji, please read the third one. Eclipse.
Now, Swadaji. Third one, translation. Eclipsed by Radha's tenderness, the fame of budding blossoms dims. The moon, the lotus, sandal paste and camphor serve her cooling limbs. When Krishna burns with love's desires, a soothing touch dispels the heat. May Radhika bestow on me the service of her lotus feet.
Thank you. Hare Krishna. Sudha Mataji. For the verse translation.
Hare Krishna Mataji, dandatpranam.
Hare Krishna, dandatpranam.
Though youthful goddesses adored by all, adore the goddess, goddess tree. She lacks Sri Radha's beauty, you and every other quality. So when it comes to lover's sports with Radha, no one can compete. May Radhika bestow on me the service of her lotus feet. Thank you.
Harebol, Hare Krishna. Uh, Shoba Mataji, please go ahead with the translation verse number five.
Hare Krishna. In arts like dancing, singing, joking, Radhika is by far the best. She shines with endless traits divine like love and gorgeous form and dress. Among the famous gopis of Vrindavanchay, supremely sweet, may Radhika bestow on me the service of her lotus feet. Hare Krishna.
Thank you Mataji. So if you see every verse, it ends with, may Radhika bestow on me the service of her lotus feet. Because that is the ultimate goal of life, that we may be engaged in the service of Shrimati Rada Rani. And Shrimati Rada Rani will engage us according to our capacity, according to our interests, according to our, um, uh, according to our inclinations in the service of Lord Krishna. Um, yes, Gillanandini Mataji, go ahead.
Hare Krishna Mataji, dandatpranam. Eternal pastimes, beauty, youth and love for Krishna makes her rich. The loving gopis tremble just to see her love at highest pitch. Her meditation on Sri Krishna's form and pastimes is complete. May Radhika bestow on me the service of her lotus feet. Hare Krishna, harebol.
Hare Krishna, thank you Mataji. Sumiti Mataji, you can read seventh.
Hare Krishna Mataji, dandatpranam. Perspiring, trembling, hands on, sorry, hairs on end and crying, faltering of the voice, impatience, joy and guile. These signs of rapture make her friends rejoice. For Krishna's eyes, her many jewelled ornaments provide a treat. May Radhika bestow on me the service of her lotus feet. Hare Krishna Mataji.
Hare Krishna. Okay, uh, Purna Mataji, go ahead.
Hare Krishna Mataji.
Hare Krishna.
Apart from Krishna for a moment, Radha, Radha feels an anxiety. And restlessness and other moods, the highest ki- kind of scotty, scarcity. Sorry Mataji.
Ecstasy, uh, highest kind of happiness, ecstasy.
Ecstasy, but when she meets him with some effort, all her sufferings retreat. May Radha, Radhika's bestow on me to, me the service of her lotus feet. Hare Krishna.
Harebol, thank you Mataji. Anjana Mataji, you can read the last one.
Hare Krishna Mataji, dandatpranam.
Hare Krishna. So this is the falla shruti of having, uh, read these verses, yes Mataji.
Exalted god, uh, god, goddesses like Parvati can hardly ever see Sri Krishna's love, uh, lover. Uh, Radh, Radhika, but if a humble devotee recites these verses, then Sri Radha, who enjoys with Sri Hari. Uh, will pour the nectar of her, Mataji, scroll it, little bit, scroll it Mataji.
Yes, yes.
Um, of her service down on him eternally.
Yeah, thank you Mataji, Hare Krishna. So if a humble devotee recites these verses, then Sri Radha, who enjoys with Sri Hari. Will pour the nectar of her service down on him eternally, pour down on him or her eternally. Hmm, so this is the falla shruti of studying these verses of Sri Radhika Ashtrikam. Hmm, so our goal, our goal is actually to become the servant of the servant of servant of Shrimati Rada Rani, right? Um, it is, it is said that Vaishnavas are worshippers of Lord Vishnu, right? And Krishnites are worshippers of Lord Krishna and they offer obeisance to Radha Rani also. Because Radha Rani is standing next to Krishna, right? Because Radha Rani is very dear to Krishna. But godly Vaishnavas, we are worshippers of Shrimati Rada Rani. Right? We offer obeisance to Shrimati Rada Rani and then we also offer obeisance to Krishna because Krishna is very dear to Radha Rani. Because Krishna is standing next to Radha Rani like that. So because it is only with the mercy of Shrimati Rada Rani that we can, uh, get the favor of Lord Sri Krishna. Hmm, and Krishna in his most merciful form, we know, has appeared as Chaitanya Mahaprabhu. Who's taken the mood and the complexion of Shrimati Rada Rani, the golden complexion that is being described in this, uh, in these verses also. The golden complexion of Shrimati Rada Rani. Okay, so now, uh, we will, uh, devotees who can switch on your cameras can do so. You'll be reading from this book. Uh, this is a very beautiful book written by His Holiness Bhakti Purushottam Swami Maharaj. Uh, this is chapter one, it's talking about who is Shrimati Rada Rani. People in general do not know about Radha Rani. Radha Tatwa is a very confidential subject matter which is hidden even from the Vedas. As a result, there are many misconceptions or no conceptions at all about Radha Rani. Sheila Praupat says, the two transcendentalists Radha and Krishna are a puzzle to materialists. The description of Radha and Krishna from the diary of Slaswuru Damodar Goswami is a condensed explanation. But one needs great spiritual insight to understand the mystery of these two personalities. Hmm, generally, it is very easily, this entire concept can be misunderstood. Right? There are people who would like to imitate, uh, the, uh, you know, the directly jump into the tenth candle. This is, we are actually dwelling on the tenth candle of Shrimad Bhagavatam, right? Which Praupat says, if you have to go from candle one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, then we completely understand. Uh, and, uh, and assimilate the greatness of Krishna. Only then can we move towards the pastimes of the, uh, sweetness of Krishna, right? If you want to understand the sweetness of Krishna, first we need to understand the greatness of Krishna, right? But on the auspicious occasion of Shrimati Rada Rani, by Shrimati Rada Rani's mercy, we are dwelling on these topics. Generally, uh, it is not appropriate to hear or speak on these topics. But, uh, any person who is sincere, who hears these pastimes, why as one prepares one's consciousness for Radha Shmi. Sincerely wanting to become the servant of the servant of the servant of Shrimati Rada Rani. Shrimati Rada Rani will bestow her asim kripa or mercy because of which we will get the right understanding of these wonderful texts. Otherwise, Bhakti, Bhakti Purushottam Swami Maharaj is mentioning, um, very, very difficult to understand these. Uh, they understand the mystery of these two great personalities, right? We know that Krishna is one and when Krishna wanted to enjoy, he himself expanded to Shrimati Rada Rani, right? And the male form and the female form of the supreme absolute truth are always worshipped together. And they expanded into, um, Lakshmi Narayan, Seeta Ram like that. So the original candle, um, in Bhagavatam, it talks about the original candle, Ekala Ishvara Krishna Ara Sabha Bhritya. There is one candle which lights up all the other candles. Whether it is a Purushavatara, Leela Avatara, Gunavatara, Manmantra Avatara, Yoga Avatara, whatever Avatara are there, right? They all stem from that one supreme personality of Godhead, uh, Sri Krishna, who has expanded into his female form, Shrimati Rada Rani. And whenever they desire, they join together to become Chaitanya Mahaprabhu. And in this way, Chaitanya Mahaprabhu also propagated the Hari Naam Sankirtan because of the mercy of Shrimati Rada Rani. Because Krishna has taken on the mood of Shrimati Rada Rani. Hmm, he has very mercifully given us, uh, this Hare Krishna Mahamantra which we can chant and perfect our life. So let's go on. Radha Rani is not some ordinary lady or even some special lady of this material world. With whom Lord Krishna was having his pastimes. She is the pleasure giving potency of the Lord, rendering service unto him eternally in the material and spiritual realms. In his book, Sri Chaitanya Charitaamritta, Krishna Raj Kaviraj Goswami has explained about Shrimati Rada Rani. By quoting a verse from the diary of Slaswuru Damodar Goswami. Radha Krishna pranaya vikratir, ladini shaktirasmat. Ekatmana vabibhuvie, puradehabedam gatauto. Chaitanya kyam prakatamaduna, tatvayam chakyam aaptam. Radha bhavajuti subalitam, naomi Krishna swarupam. So this is part of the Chaitanya Charitaamritta Mangalacharan prayers. Uh, written by Shla Krishnadas Kaviraj Goswami Maharaj. So if you all remember, every day they are reciting these prayers in the morning. Along with Chaturshloki Bhagavad Gita, Chaturshloki Bhagavatam, we also recite these wonderful prayers. Radha Krishna ekatma duhi. Radha Krishna ekatma duideh dhari anyonye vilase rasasvadhana dhari. The loving affairs of Sri Radha and Krishna are transcendental manifestations of the Lord's internal pleasure-giving potency. Although Radha and Krishna are one in their identity, they separated themselves eternally. Now these two transcendental identities have again united in the form of Shri Krishna Chaitanya Mahaprabhu. I bowed down to him who has manifested himself with the sentiment and complexion of Shrimati Radha Rani, although he is Krishna himself. So Radha and Krishna are one and the same, they resume the two bodies, thus they enjoy each other tasting the mellows of love. So a lot of many verses have been quoted by Maharaj. So we'll just read some of these verses, uh, which is, uh, which actually describes the ladini shakti of the Lord. Ladini rasara prema premasara bhava bhavera parama kastra nama mahabhaava. The essence of the ladini potency is love of God. The essence of love of God is emotion, bhava, and the ultimate development of emotion is mahabhaava. Mahabhaava svarupa Sri Radhatapurani sarva guna kani Krishna kandha shiromani. Sri Radha Thakurani is the embodiment of mahabhaava. She is the repository of all good qualities and the crest dwell among all the lovely concerts of Lord Krishna. Krishna prema bhavita yaara chittendriya kaya Krishna nija shakti Radha riddharasahaya. Her mind, senses and body are steeped in love for Krishna. She is Krishna's own energy and she helps Krishna in his pastimes. So this is a purport written by Sheila Propath on these verses. Shrimati Radha Rani, purport by Zvangraze Abhisaranarvinda Bhaktivedanta Swami Sheila Propath. Zvangraze Abhisaranarvinda Bhaktivedanta Swami Sheila Propath, ki jai. It is only with the mercy of Sheila Propath that we are able to understand these very high, uh, esoteric, transcendental pastimes of Sri Radha and Krishna. Sheila Propath's purport make us understand what these leelas mean to us. How can, how should we understand these wonderful pastimes? So purport by Sheila Propath, Sheila Propath, ki jai. Shrimati Radha Rani is as fully spiritual as Krishna. No one should consider her to be material. She is definitely not like the conditioned souls or material bodies, gross and subtle, covered by material senses. She is all spiritual and both her body and her mind are of the same spiritual embodiment. Because her body is spiritual, her senses are also spiritual. Thus her body, mind and senses fully shine in love of Krishna. She is the personified ladini shakti, the pleasure-giving energy of the Lord's internal potency. And therefore, she is the only source of enjoyment for Shri Krishna. Shri Krishna cannot enjoy anything that is internally different from him. Therefore, Radha and Krishna are identical. The sandini portion of Shri Krishna's internal potency has manifested the all-attractive form of Shri Krishna. And the same internal potency, the ladini feature, has presented Shrimati Radha Rani, who is the attraction for the all-attractive. No one can match Shrimati Radha Rani in the transcendental pastimes of Shri Krishna. This is purport to Chaitanya Charitaamritta Adilila, four point sixty-eight, sixty-nine and seventy-one, right? That's why Krishna is called Madan Mohan because he attracts even the cupid. But Radha Rani is called Madan Mohan Mohini, the one who attracts even Madan Mohan, right? The one who attracts even Krishna. So how much more attract, how much more attractive should be that person who attracts the most attractive, isn't it? Very beautiful, isn't it? Uh, this is a tongue twister, very beautifully proper, this mentioned here. Right, how much attractive should that person be who is able to attract the most attractive Lord Shri Krishna? Hmm, is another than Shrimati Radha Rani. So some more verses are quoted here, uh, we will just quote a few of them. In Brahat Gautamaya Tantra, it is being stated, Devi Krishna mai prokta Radhika para devata sarvalakshmi mai sarva danti samohini para. The transcendental goddess, Shrimati Radha Rani, is the direct counterpart of Lord Shri Krishna. She is the central figure for all the goddesses of fortune. She possesses all the attractiveness to attract the all-attractive personality of Godhead. She is the primeval internal potency of the Lord. Chahatmohanakrishna tanhata mohini atayva samastera parathakurani. Lord Krishna enchants the world, but Sri Radha enchants even Krishna. Therefore, she is the supreme goddess of all. Radhapurna shakti Krishna purana shakti man duhi vastu vedanai shastra praman. Sri Raga is the full power and Lord Krishna is the possessor of full power. The two are not different as evidenced by the revealed scriptures, right? So just because, if a person does not have power, it cannot be called powerful, isn't it? A person who does not have energy, it cannot be called energetic, right? Krishna is called supremely energetic because his energy is supreme, Shrimati Radha Rani. Radha Krishna aiche sada ekai swarupa leela rasasvadite dhare dhui rupa. Thus Radha and Krishna are one, yet they have taken two forms to enjoy the mellows of pastimes. Radhika hayena krishnera pranaya vikara swarupa shaktila dini namaya hara. Shrimati Radhika is the transformation of Krishna's love. She is his internal energy called ladini. Ladini karaya Krishna ananda swadhana ladhi neera dwara kare bhaktira pochana. Very beautiful verse, we'll read it again, Chaitanya Charitaamritta Adilila, four point sixty. Ladini karaya Krishna ananda swadhana ladhi neera dwara kare bhaktira pochana. That ladini energy, who is Shrimati Radha Rani, she gives Krishna pleasure. And more importantly, what she does to us, she nourishes Krishna's devotees. So this is the first chapter, it is, it is a, uh, there are many, many chapters. The next chapter, the greatness of Radha Rani's love for Krishna. So we'll just read the first section, very, very beautiful, uh, how His Holiness Bhakti Purushottam Swami Maharaj has actually quoted various scriptures. Um. So he's saying, it is necessary for us to know the difference between love and lust that we might understand Radha Rani's loving mood. I will quote from Sri Chaitanya Charitaamritta on this subject matter, as it has been explained by Shla Krishna Das Kaviraj Goswami, along which La Propath purports. Hmm, so we'll just read this section and we'll end, yeah? Gopi gane rapi mera Radha bhava nama visu dhanir malaprema kabu nahe kama. The love of the gopis is called Radha Bhava, which is pure and spotless. It is not at any time lust. Purport by Sheila Propath, Sheila Propath, ki jai. The position of gopis in their loving dealings with Krishna is transcendental. Their emotion is called Radha Bhava. Although it is apparently like mundane sex desire, one should not confuse it with mundane sexual love for it is pure and unadulterated love of Godhead. Chaitanya Charitaamritta Adilila, four point one sixty-two. Kama prema doha kara vibhina lakshana laha arahema yache swarupe vilakshana. Lust and love have different characteristics, just as iron and gold have different natures, right? Iron and gold, right? Iron can become as hot as gold, there is always distinction between iron and gold, that's what is mentioned here. Atmendrai apriti vanchka tare bhalikama. Krishna indriya apriti cha dhare premanama. The desire to gratify one's own senses is karma or lust, but the desire to please the senses of Lord Krishna is prema or love. One should try to discriminate between sexual love and pure love for they belong to different categories, the gulf of difference between them. They are as different from one another as iron is from gold. The revealed scriptures describe pure love as follows. Sarvata atvamsa rahitam sati apidvamsa karani yadva bandhanam, you know, sa prema apariki ditaha. If there is ample reason for the resolution of a conjugal relationship and yet such a resolution does not take place, such a relationship of intimate love is called pure. The predominated gopis were bound to Krishna in such pure love. For them, there was no question of sexual love based on sense gratification. Their only engagement in life was to see Krishna happy in all respects, regardless of their own personal interests. They dedicated their souls only for the satisfaction of the personality of Godhead Shri Krishna. There are not the slightest change of sexual love between the gopis and Krishna. So very beautifully, this chapter continues. But we'll just end with one pastime. So once Krishna had a headache, right? Or at least Krishna told everyone that I have severe headache, I want my pure devotees to give the dust from their feet so that I can be cured of the headache, right? And then Naradhmani goes to various people, right? Krishna wants the dust off your lotus feet because his head is aching. And everybody knows if one gives the dust of one's feet to Krishna, hmm, what happens? That person suffers in hell for millions and millions of lifetimes. Hmm, but when Naradhmani went to the gopis, then what did the gopis do? Oh, the dust from our feet will cure Krishna of his headache? Even if it cures Krishna of his one second headache, we are willing to go to, uh, to hellish planets for millions and millions of lifetimes if we can satisfy Krishna simply by relieving him of his headache. So that is the mood of the gopis, hmm, that is, uh, that is why we all, we are all aspiring for this particular mood. Gopi bhartu patakamaliyor dasa dasa dasanu dasa. And the head of all the gopis, whom the gopis also want to satisfy and please, that supreme gopi is Shrimati Radha Rani, right? Whom Krishna also wants to please, right? And if, and Shrimati Radha Rani is the most easiest to please. Uh, she sees the desire of the living entity and sometimes when our desire is not okay also, she sees our actions, right? Whether or, sometimes our actions are, uh, are not so good, but our intentions are good, right? But sometimes our intentions are not so good, but our actions are good. But neither case, a devotee always wants to serve and please and satisfy Shrimati Radha Rani. But from Shrimati Radha Rani, from her side, she sees, uh, in the entire white cloth, uh, if, in, I mean, in, in an entire black cloth of all anarthas, if there is one white spot, which is, which is just a small, um, spark of desire to serve Shrimati Radha Rani, she will blow that up and she will recommend us to Krishna. Oh, this person does us seva very nicely, so please let us take her in our service. And in this way, when Radha Rani recommends, then that one white spot, which is so, uh, which is so invisible, it cannot be visible even through a microscope, uh, but even that much little desire if we have to please Shrimati Radha Rani. Shrimati Radha Rani will blow it up so much, uh, she has the potency to blow it up so much that there will be nothing else left in our heart except the service attitude. And in this way, we'll be able to perfect our lives by the mercy of Shrimati Radha Rani. So a lot of, a lot of things are there, of course, uh, you know, how much can we speak? Anantashesh cannot glorify Krishna with his thousands of mouths. And here we are saying, somebody who is more attractive even than Lord Krishna, right? She is Madan Mohan Mohini, so how much can we describe? Her glories are unlimited. If Krishna's glories are unlimited, then unlimited to the power of unlimited, that is the glory of Shrimati Radha Rani. Jai Jai Sri Radhe Shyam. All right, so now we'll sing this beautiful, um, song. Uh, I know it's going to be two o'clock. I, devotees would like to log out, if you have some other engagements, it's fine. But we'll sing this beautiful song, uh, you can maybe catch, uh, catch up on YouTube later if you have any other engagement. Uh, so, um, we will do, uh, Radhika, Kripa Kataksha Stotra. And then we'll also sing Naradhumdas Thakuris, Radha Krishna Pran Mora Jugala Kishore, right? Where Naradhumdas Thakur is actually mentioning what is the mood of a devotee as he engages in devotional service. Okay, so first of all, uh, let me, uh, let me share my screen. Yeah, Kripa Kataksha Stotra. Sri Sri Radha, Kripa Kataksha Stavaraja, the prayer for the merciful sidelong glance of Sri Radha. Hmm, we'll end by C two fifteen. Okay, so we'll sing this beautiful song. Uh, this song is very, very beautiful, right? Every verse ends with, hmm, oh, Shrimati Radha Rani, when will you cast your merciful sidelong glance upon me, right? If a Shrimati Radha Rani just looks at us, you know, her glance is on us, hmm, then what happens? Uh, our life, uh, our life's goal is fulfilled, right? Her simply, her kataksha is all that is necessary for us. Okay, so we will sing this song and then, uh, you know, devotees can read the translations. Otherwise, we'll quickly summarize and then we'll also sing the other song by Naradhumdas Thakur and we'll try to, uh, close by, uh, two fifteen P M after Haryanam Sankirtan. Muni, okay, what is this, something on the chat box? C C. And you can log on YouTube and, uh, go through this, yeah? Munin grevinda bandite riloka shoka harini. Prasannavatra pankajyujabhu vilasi. Prajendra bhaanunandini prajendra sunusangate. Kadha karishasi hama. Kripa kathaksha bhajanam. Ashoka vikshaval lari vitana mandapa stitha. Prabharu nangrikoma. Ale para bhaya surat kare prabhu ta sampa dalaye. Kadha karishasi hama. Kripa kathaksha bhajanam. Kadha karishasi hama. Kripa kathaksha bhajanam. Kadha karishasi hama. Kripa kathaksha bhajanam. Trigantabana paathanai nirantaram. Vasikrittha pratiti nandanandane. Kadha karishasi hama. Kripa kathaksha bhajanam. Vidshuvarna champaka pradhitagora vigraye. Mukha prabha prastakoti. Sharavenduman dalay. Vicitra chitra sanchara chakora shavalochanee. Kadha karishasi ramam. Kripa kathaksha bhajanam. Madhun madati yavane. Pramodamana mandite priyano ragaranjite. Kalavilasa pandite. Ananya dhanya kunja rajya kamakeeli. Govijay kadha karishasi hama. Kripa kathaksha bhajanam. Ashishavava bhavadhira. Hira harabhushiche prabhu ta shaadhakumbhav. Prashastamayenda hastya churna puranasavyasagaré. Kadha karishasi hama. Kripa kathaksha bhajanam. Naalaval lari taranggarangadorlaten. Tathagra larsyalola nila. Luchnava lochanee. Lalalulandilan manogya mugdamohanashite. Kadha karishasi hama. Kripa kathaksha bhajanam. kripa kataksha bhajanam, trireka kambukantage, visutra mangali ho ra, yatra bhitiridhi, salola neela gunthala, prasula gucha gumte, kadha karisha sihi hamam, kripa kataksha bhajanam, pushpa milkhalagune, karingra shunda dhantika, paroha saubagoruke, kadha karisha sihi haman, kripa kataksha bhajanam, lu puraravastalat, samajaraaja, vilola hemak ballari vidham, vicharu chakra me, kadha karisha sihi haman, kripa kataksha bhajanam, nanthakoti vishnu lokam, iranjijavara prade, kadha karisha sihi haman, kripa kataksha bhajanam, preeshwari, vieshwari, swadeshwari, sureshwari, trivedha bhartiishwari, pravana shashneshwari, prameshwari, shameshwari, prajeshwari, prajadipe, radhika namostute, prajeshwari, prajadipe, shiradhika namostute, prajeshwari, prajadipe, shiradhika namostute, jimanatam stavam, nishamyabhanu nandini, karotusantatam janam, kripa kataksha bhajanam, bhaveta devasanchita, trirupa karmanashanam, bhaveta da prajendra shun, mandala praveshanam, ayantaka seetaasniyam, dashamayam chavishuda ji, ekhadascham prayodasham, atet sadhaka sudhi, yam yamkamayadheykamam, tam tamapnoti sadhaka, radha kripa katakshina, bhakti syaatpremalakshana, urudhini navidhne, radha kundharale sritha, kaatet sadhaka shatam, syaadvakshamartyam tatha, lavetayshvaryam chalave, akshadrushapa shakti radhikam. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare, peena sachana deva, tushta dhatte mahavaram, peena fashatine khabyaan, taatvayam shama sundaram, nityalila pragisham, dadhati shivrajadipa, adhah parataram pratyam, kaisnava syanavidhyate, iti shri matur dhvamnay, shiradhikaaya kripa kataksha stotram sampurnam. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. So Kripa Kataksha, hmm, you simply have to beg for the mercy of Shrimati Radha Rani if we, if we buy, buy, by the my costless mercy of Radha Rani, if she, if we get her mercy and there is nothing else that is required to be asked for, there is nothing else that, that we need to seek for. We simply need to engage like we chant every day, right? Oh Krishna, oh Shrimati Radha Rani, kindly engage me in your service. That in itself is the perfection of life. Devotional service in itself is a perfection of life. There is nothing else to seek for, there is nothing else to aspire for, there is nothing else to ask for. Because devotional service in itself is the process as well as the preojana, hmm, as well as the goal. So now we will sing this beautiful song. We can all read the translation. I'll post it in the group. Please read the translation of these wonderful songs. So let me now share Narokamdas Thakur's Radha Krishna Pranam Mora Jugala Kishore. With this we will end after Hainam Sankirtan. But I will request devotees kindly um read the uh translations of these beautiful songs. Both Radha Krishna Pranam Mora as well as the um Kripa Kataksha, Shri Radha Kripa Kataksha Stotra. Okay, so let me uh share my screen. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Okay, so we will sing this song, Radha Krishna Pranam Mora Jugala Kishore. Jeevanay maranegati aro nahimora. So we will read, we will sing this song and then devotees can read the translations. So we request a few devotees, raise your hands after the song and then we can read. This is, this gives, the song is written by Narokamdas Thakur. Uh the book name is Prarthana. What are we doing now? We are doing Prarthana only. You are doing Prarthana means prayers and Lotus Vito Shishirada and Krishna. And what better way to please their lordships than by repeating the words of our Vaishnava Acharyas? This is the best form of prayer because we remind the Lord of his pure devotees and when the mercy flows, it will also reach us. That is our only goal. Tadhka Krishna pranamora, jugala kishora, jeevanay maranegati, aro nahimora, Tadhka Krishna pranamora, jugala kishora, jeevanay maranegati, aro nahimora, kalindira kulakeli, karambe ravala, ratanavedira ubar, bose vadujana, Tadhka Krishna pranamora, jugala kishora, jeevanay maranegati, aro nahimora, ramagauriyange diva, chandale raganta, chamaradhulabo kare, Radha Krishna pranamora, jugala kishora, patiya malakirmalak, divo tohar galay, adharay chuliyaa diva, karpurataam boole, Tadhka Krishna pranamora, jugala kishora, Lalita vishakadi, jadasa dibrata, adhaya kodiba seva charanadabinda, Tadhka Krishna pranamora, jugala kishora, Krishna chaitanya, prabhu ta sevra dha, seva bilasha kore, karota mada, Tadhka Krishna pranamora, jugala kishora, jeevanay maranegati, aro nahimora, Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Ram Rama, Hare Hare, Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Kam Rama, Hare Hare, Tadhka Krishna pranamora, jugala kishora, jeevanay maranegati, aro nahimora. Hare Krishna, Solilangari Madaji, please read the translation.
Hare Krishna, Madaji. Uh translation, the divine couple, Shishi Radha and Krishna is my life and soul. In life or death, I have no other refuge but them. Hare Krishna.
Thank you, Madaji. Sarvagapishim, Madaji. Second one. Hare Krishna, Madaji. In a forest of small kadamba trees on the bank of the Yamuna, I will see the divine couple on the throne made of brilliant jewels. Hare Krishna, Madaji. Hare Krishna. Um, Aishwari Madaji.
Hare Krishna, Madaji. I will anoint their dark and fair forms with sandalwood paste centered with chuya and I will fan them with a chamara bisque. Oh, when will I behold their moon-like faces? Hare Krishna. Thank you, Madaji.
Thank you, Madaji. Shilpi, Madaji, please read. Fourth one.
Nandri Madaji.
Madaji, you not unweed yourselves, you not.
Yes, yes.
After stringing together from there?
Yes. Actually, after stringing together garlands of Malati, Malati flowers, I will place them around their necks and I will offer Sambhula sanctificates camphor to their lotus mouth.
Hare Krishna, thank you. Arpa Gali, Madaji. Fifth one.
Thank, thank you, Madaji.
Hare Krishna.
The permission, with the permission of all the Sakis headed by Lalita and Vishaka, I will serve the, I will serve the Lotus Vito Prada and Krishna. Thank you, Mad.
Yeah, Purnam, Madaji.
Shall I continue the. Narottam Das, the servant of the servant of Shri Krishna Chaitanya Prabhu longs for this service to the divine couple. Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. So this is a desire. Uh what is Narokamdas Thakur who is our Vaishnav Acharya, what is his desire? The servant of the servant of the servant of Shri Krishna Chaitanya Mahabrahmu longs for this service to the divine couple, right? He desires to serve the divine couple but not by transgressing uh his superiors, right? What the previous one talks about, with the permission of all the Sakis headed by Lalita and Vishaka, I will serve the Lotus Vito Prada and Krishna. So it is very important we take permission from our spiritual masters, from our gurus, hmm, whether we want, whether we can engage in a particular service. And when we, when, when our endeavors are blessed by guru, then we can understand that Goranga, Shishi Radha and Krishna are blessed by our services. But if our services, whatever we are doing is according to our mind's imagination, we think that something pleases, we don't know what please, what will please Radha and Krishna. But if we please guru, our immediate Siksha gurus and Diksha guru, then in this way, we will be able to please Shishi Radha and Krishna. And when we please Shishi Radha and Krishna, then what else is required in life? There is nothing more that we can, that we need to ask for because we've got everything with the mercy of Shrimati Radha Rani. So let us chant more rounds of Hare Krishna Mahamantra. Let us sing all these wonderful bhajans again and again. Uh and we were also uh looking at this verse, very beautiful verse, uh which we can recite multiple times. Bajami Radha Maravindanetram, smarami Radha Madhural Smitasyam, vadhami Radha Karuna Parardram, tatoh mamanyasigati nakapi. Bajami Radha Maravindanetram, smarami Radha Madhural Smitasyam, vadhami Radha Karuna Parardram, tatoh mamanyasigati nakapi. Bajami Radha Maravindanetram, smarami Radha Madhural Smitasyam, vadhami Radha Karuna Parardram, tatoh mamanyasigati nakapi. I worship Radha who has lotus eyes. I remember Radha who has a sweet smile. I speak of Radha who is melted with compassion. There is nothing else for me. She is my life and soul. This is a prayer by Shragnada Dasugoswami. So today as many times, we can memorize, it's a simple two-line prayer, right? When we understand the meaning, we can easily by heart it, right? I worship, bajami means worship. I worship Radha who has lotus eyes. Bajami Radha, Arabindanetram. Then I remember Radha who has a sweet smile. Smarami Radha, Madhural Smitasyam. Then vadhami, vadhami means I will speak about that Radha. Who is Karuna Parardram, who is the, uh who is melted with compassion. Hmm, there is nothing else for me. Tatoh mamanyasti, gatir nakapi. I don't have any other destination other than Shrimati Radha Rani's mercy. She is my life and soul. So with this, we will by heart this or we can, we can post it in places where we go regularly on the fridge, wherever we are and we can by heart this verse and then continuously recite these verses. This is a prayer of Ragunada Dasugoswami who is our Preojana Acharya. Preojana Acharya means he is the embodiment of the, or the Acharya for Krishna Prem. Right? We have our Sambandha Acharya, we have our um uh, what is it? Uh Abideya Acharya and we have our Preojana Acharya. Sambandha Acharya is Sanatana Goswami who establishes that Jivareswarapay Krishna Rinitya Das, right? I am servant of the Lord. Hmm, and then Abideya Acharya is Rupa Goswami who teaches us, um who teaches us how do we note a deep, how do we need to engage in the Navavidya process of Bhakti from Shravanam to Atmanivadanam? And then finally Ragunada Dasugoswami is a Preojana Acharya. Uh in that way, the mercy of Krishna flows down to us. We will be recipients of Krishna Prema. So that Acharya is Ragunada Dasugoswami. This is his prayer, right? How do we attain Krishna Prema? Three simple steps. Bajami Radham, smarami Radham, vadhami Radham and tatoh mamansyasi gatir nakapi. There is no other destination. I am not under the shelter of anybody else other than Shrimati Radha Rani. Jai Jai Shri Radhe Shyam. Jagatguru, Shri La Prabhada ki jai, Shri La Gurudeva ki jai, Ananta Koji Vaishnavavridha ki jai. Itai God Prema Nande Hari Hari Bol. So let's see who all we have today. Uh and like somebody, some people left the session because there are other sessions. Because there are other sessions but that's fine So even if you've joined for some time, that's really wonderful Shrimati Radha Rani, me Shrimati Radha Rani, you please with all of us And the best of us with Krishna prema Okay, so yeah, I heard that when we go to Vrindavan Dam We take a dip in Radha Kunt And because Krishna is very pleased if we take a dip in Radha Kunt And then we take a dip in Shama Kunt because Radha Rani is very pleased Right? But so we take a dip in Shama Kunt and Radha Kunt We want to please Radha only Because in either case Radha Kunt is a kunt of Radha Rani Which she actually created with her bangle And Radha Rani is non-different from Radha Kunt And we also take a dip in Shama Kunt because it pleases Radha Rani So ultimately it is Radha Rani for us all times through Right? Because if you please Radha Rani then you are pleasing Krishna's most desired Shrimati Radha Rani, right? There can be no, there can be no No equivalent to Shrimati Radha Rani in driving in giving pleasure to Lord Shri Krishna That's what the Chaitanya Charitamrit Mangalachan prayers also say, right? So now we will do Hainam sankirtan, let us meditate on how we can please Shrimati Radha Rani How we can please our gurus Because we please our gurus then Radha Rani is pleased and then Radha Rani will take us back home back to Godhead Hari krishna, yeah, I was saying who are all there, right? So Maheshwari Madhaji, Lila Nandiri Madhaji, Purnamadhaji, Moashmi Madhaji Tarpadavalli Madhaji, Sarvagupishwari Madhaji, Shriadarprabhu Anjanamadhaji and all the wonderful devotees who have joined us today Vanchakalpatarupiyacha, Nepasindu Geevacha, Patithaanam Paavini Bhyo Vaishnave Bhyo namo namaha Ananta Koti Vaishnavavrindha ki jai Jagatguru Shri La Prabhada ki jai Shri La Gurudeva ki jai 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 shri radhe Shyam So tomorrow on the auspicious occasion of Radashtrami Is only Radhanatshami Maharaja is giving a class in Radagopinath Mandir Mumbai So devotees who are coming from across the states of India or across the world Let's meet at Radagopinath Mandir tomorrow In case you are coming, pick me, we can all meet Hari krishna So now we'll do Hainam sankirtan, we are half an hour late I would like to thank all the devotees who are so patient, tolerant, tolerating me Although I've just exceeded the time beyond limits And we'll just end in about three, four minutes by doing Hainam sankirtan So wishing you all the devotees very, 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 very happy Shri Shri Radashtrami Mahamohut Sava So may this Radashtrami Bring about the fulfillment of all of our desires And we should have only one desire Which is to please Shrimati Radha Rani and may our desire be fulfilled Hari krishna Namah Krishna padaya krishna prishaya Dulutale simade bhaktive dhaant Swami ji nam Namase sarshvake dev Paasakya dishatharine Jayya shri krishna chaitanya Prabhu nityananda Siadvaita gadaadha Shrivasadihauraa Puttavinda Hari krishna hari krishna 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 hari 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 rama hari rama Ram rama hari 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 krishna hari krishna 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 hari 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 rama hari rama Ram rama hari 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 krishna hari krishna 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 hari 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 rama hari rama rama hari 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 krishna hari krishna 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 hari 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 rama Hari rama 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 hari hari Govinda jaya jaya Gopal jaya jaya Radha Ramanahari Govinda jaya jaya Govinda jaya jaya shri Gopal Jaya jaya Radha Ramanahari Govinda jaya jaya hari krishna Hari krishna 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 hari 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 rama hari rama rama Hari hari jai Gora ni tai jai gora ni tai Gora ni tai jai gora ni tai Jayo Radha madhav Radha Madhav Radha madhav Shri radhe jayo Radha shama sundar Radha Shama sundar radhe radhe Jaya Radha rasadihari Radha Rasadihari radhe radhe Jaya radhe jayo radhe Jayo radhe jayo Shri radhe jayo radhe 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 Shri radhe Jai jai abrahupaa Abrahupaa Ni tai gora hari bol Gora hari bol Gora hari bol ni tai Gora hari bol ni tai Gora hari bol Gora hari bol Gora hari bol Gora hari bol Jai jai shri radhe shyam Jai jai shri vandavanam Jagatguru Shri La Prabhada Gurudeva ki jaiho Nithai God Prema Nande Hari Hari Bol Shri Radashtrami Adibas Mahamohut Sava ki jaiho Nithai Gauri Prema Nande Hari Hari Bol Hari krishna, so thank you very much dear devotees for staying for the extended time My sincere gratitude to all of you who join us every day So now we will end the meeting, it's already over time So in case anyone wants to share anything Anyone who is coming to Mumbai tomorrow Then you can tell me now, otherwise We will meet online tomorrow morning for Brahmanmurka chanting And then we'll meet on Monday morning after that Of course Sunday also we'll meet for morning Brahmanmurka session But we meet for Shlapropad book study on Monday now at 12:45 PM standard time Anyone else wants to share anything, any realizations, any queries? Okay, so it's already too much time Hari krishna, thank you very much Vanchakalpatarupiyacha, Kripasindu Geevacha, Adithaanam Paavini Bhyo, Vaishnave Bhyo namo namaha Ananta Koti Vaishnavavrindha ki jai, Nithai God Prema Nande Hari Hari Bol So happy, happy, happy Shri Radashtrami Mahamohut Sava to all the devotees Hari Bol, Hari krishna
To you Madhaji Happy Radashtrami